One minute. I call the meeting to order. Mayor Sherman Saunders had to be away tonight due to an unexpected death and a dear friend of the family, so he wishes he were here but could not be. So I'm stepping in first. I'd like to give the invocation. Let us stand, please.
We'll do a roll call.
Oh, roll call first. It's all right, we'll do a roll call.
Reverend Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rawlin?
Here.
Mayor Saunders? Mr. Shanks?
Here.
Mr. Tomer?
Here.
Mr. Vogler?
Here.
You rise now when you say here?
Now we're standing. Now we're... Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I'm ready to go.
Okay. Let us pray. Start the meeting. As we join in our deliberation tonight, as we seek input from our citizens, as we hear from our many valued city employees, let us be ever mindful that the overriding goal of each council member should be to do what is best for the people of our city. We must keep in mind that only with the help of God can we do what's best for our city. And our goal is to make Danville the very best place to live for all its citizens, of every race, of every religion, of every social economic group, for we know in God's eye that all of us are equal from the day we're born to the day that we die. Amen. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Well, I can tell by the size of the crowd we must have a busy agenda, so we're going to start, though, with our Duke Energy report on the coal ash spill cleanup.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. King, and members of Danville City staff. It's a pleasure to be with you again. My name is Davis Montgomery. I'm the district manager for Duke Energy, Duke Energy, Carolinas. It's good to be here with you again tonight to talk with you a little bit about several things. First would be the update on the work in the park. That operation continues to go well, as with most processes, once you get them up and running, you like to tweak them and get them as efficient as you possibly can. So things that we've... It's the same process you use called lean engineering, so our production has continued to get better each and every day. We did have one day when we needed to shut the operation down. The turbidity in the water got a little high, so we had to go back and reset the machinery to get that under control, but that was just a momentary delay. So we're back and running and doing very well. The vacuum dredge, and it is called a vacuum dredge, as most people misunderstand that this is not a traditional dredge, this is a vacuum dredge, works very much like what you'd expect, pulling tops layers off the bottom of the river. It can do as much as 1,500 gallons a minute. We are not running close to that right now, but we are trying to maximize it out as best we can. The combination of sediment and ash material, some of you have had a chance to go down there and take a tour of that, is being put into lined dumpsters, or what we call roll-offs, because they have wheels on the backside of them, you're all very familiar with them. They are lined, and it's sealed, and then taken to the landfill. The roll-offs will hold between eight to 10 tons apiece. They come in different sizes. We currently have about six to eight of those a day that we're filling and removing, so somewhere in that 60 to 80 ton range is about what we're doing per day. If you were to take a look at what our total production has been, I guess that might be the way to refer to it, we have removed about 1,200 cubic yards of material so far. I wish I could give you an estimate as to how that would relate to the rest of the deposit, but again, that is an ongoing evaluation, so 1,200 cubic yards is what we have been able to do so far. We still have our timeline for completion, which I think is important to you folks, to be in July. Of course, weather permitting and some of the other things that may influence that, but we still are on target to complete that work in July. Just as a side, but something related to that, there was one other deposit upstream near the city of Eden at Town Creek, and we have begun work on that this week. So the other major deposit that was located is at Town Creek, and it's just a few miles downstream of Eden. A couple of items that I wanted to bring up to you that may be of interest since our last update, there's been several agreements that have been signed between Duke Energy and other agencies. The first one was the EPA. We have signed an agreement with the EPA, and this is basically formalizing the work that we have been doing so far. This just addresses the work that's taking place in the river, that is between Duke Energy, other federal agencies, Virginia and North Carolina. It stipulates several things, one of which is that any material that comes out of the river will go into a lined landfill. That's one part of it. The other course is that it establishes that we will reimburse the EPA for any and all costs of supervision of the project, but it just formalizes the work that has been taking place down there so far. I have, hopefully you folks will have a copy of the EPA map. It was in that agreement that shows you some of the work that has been done along the river. If you look at that map, you've got two readings on there, and this came from the EPA agreement. There are two readings, the top reading, which was the first survey of the river, and then the bottom reading, which was the second survey of the river. The first survey took place at the end of March, and it took a few weeks to complete because there was a weather delay in there. The bottom number is a survey that started the last week in April, and it was finished the second week of May. Now, what those numbers tell you, you can see if there's been any percentage increase or decrease in a location. If there has been an increase, it's color-coded with a red dot. If there's been a decrease, it's color-coded with a green dot. Then you have the other numbers that just basically tell you what the percentage of ash is that they have found, and this is basically in the top six inches of the sediment. The ND there stands for non-detect, so you can see that in those places it's basically a trace, or it's non-detectable. You can see how that has moved down the river over that time period, that there has been changes in those numbers as you get down to the furthest part east of the river. But if you look at it, you'll see that basically beyond Danville, most of the readings are in that very, very low percentage range, to the most current reading being non-detect. There has been one other survey of the river that was done in the early part of June, but those numbers are not available to us yet. The next agreement that was signed was the Natural Resource Damage Assessment. This is a cooperative agreement between what is named, what are named as trustees of that agreement, and Duke Energy. The trustees in this agreement are the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality, and North Carolina Dean or Department of Environment and Natural Resources. Those are the three trustees. Basically, what they're looking at here is that we want to take a look at doing an assessment of the river and seeing what, if any, damage was done to the river, and if so, this is a cooperative process in which you're not held up by litigation, that you can go forth and start doing some of that restoration work. So it's not meant to be a penalty, it's not meant to be a fine, none of those things are precluded, but this is meant to be a way that we can get started doing work on the river. As you might imagine, if it would or could be held up in some sort of litigation, it might be years before anything actually started taking place. And this is an agreement that allows you to get beyond that and start doing some favorable work up and down the river. This is a long-running agreement. It is not something that's going to end within X number of months. In fact, there is no identified timeline for it, and it will go on as long as U.S. Fish and Wildlife and these board of trustees say that it will go on. An important part of this agreement is that there will be public input, in which they will ask the public for their ideas of what would you like to see, what do you think has happened, so there will be opportunities for the public to provide their input to this damage assessment. The last thing that I'll talk with you about, one other benefit to this, let me add this as well, because this does not involve litigation, it means that there's no cost to the taxpayers on this. It's an agreement between us and the trustees, so we work forward that way. If it got tied up in litigation, of course, it'd be that cost to the taxpayers that'd have to be passed on. The last thing that you may be interested in that I'll mention is, North Carolina went through the Senate, they passed a bill today that was approved, Senate Bill 729, is basically addressing, it is a bill that's before our Senate, about how we'll treat the ash basins going forward. It's a very comprehensive piece of legislation, we're still looking at it, but I think one of the main criteria in there that most everybody is interested in is a deadline for dealing with the ash ponds in North Carolina. They give a time period of 15 years to deal with that. The reason I mention that, all states are taking a look at this legislation because they too will be affected, as I said, there's over 600 of these across the United States, so every state is watching this with probably great interest. Just a few things of interest to you tonight, be glad to answer any questions if you have...
Questions from council? Ms. Chen.
The information you provided on the map indicates increases in the first three gauge stations upstream from Danville.
Yes, sir.
Does that cause Duke any alarm? And should it be causing us some alarm?
I would say quite truthfully, anytime the number goes up, we're going to pay attention to it. When you look at the percentages, and this is EPA's map, they have some criteria for when they will initiate an action in that part of the river, and basically, I don't want to speak for EPA, but I think their threshold is 20%, so it's still well below that threshold. But you're right, it's basically showing us that that has moved down the river.
Yeah, and the percentages of two of them are pretty large, from 8% to 17%, and from non-detect to 14%, so they are substantial increases.
It's a big, it's a difference, especially when it was non-detect before. So as you might imagine, they're looking at that very closely, we're looking at that very closely. And we have one other model, that's a sediment flow model that has been initiated by the University of Mississippi, and they're going to incorporate that as they look up and down the river for where these deposits might be.
One other question, the Dan River Plant?
Yes, sir.
Still has buried coal ash, and two of, at least one, maybe part of the other holding pond. What is your short-term goal with dealing with those two ponds, and the coal ash that's presently in them?
At our Dan River Plant?
Yes, sir.
As you might imagine, we're going to take that direction from the Senate bill that's going to tell us what to do with that.
So there's no special, you're not dealing with that in a separate manner, you're just going to handle whatever passes the legislature.
Yes, sir. There is the cleanup and the remediation of the river, which is one project, as you might think of it that way. The ash basins and the ash ponds are a separate project altogether that'll be governed by the state. But that one is a high priority project simply because of the spill, and of course, it is close to the river. I think they've identified four that are close to the river that will be high priority projects.
Well, we thank you for being here, but I urge you to please put that at the top of the list, we've already had enough coal ash.
I can absolutely guarantee you, we have a lot of eyes on that facility, not only ours, but the state and EPA and others. But yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions, council?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
I know, you know, 15 years was the Senate bill, but at least it was reported that Duke Energy didn't feel that was sufficient time to clean up all the waste dumps. Are you going to fight that bill, or just accept what the legislature tells you, or...
I'm not sure if "fight" is quite...
Well, contest that.
I think we try to bring some sort of a balanced approach to that and say reasonably, if you want, and of course, it depends on what you want us to do with it. If you want us to move it, if you want us to have beneficial reuse, about 70% of the coal ash that we produce from active plants today goes back to beneficial reuse, so there's alternatives, so it all depends on what the state tells us to do with it. But I would say our first reaction was that 15 years was probably pretty tight, considering the amount of coal ash that's out there. And that's, I would just say that, not speaking for the company, but speaking for myself.
Okay. Other questions? Good.
Thank you very much. And as always, if you have any questions, if there's anything I can help you with, feel free to give me a call. Thank you, Mr. King.
Thank you. Come again. Now, we're going to the public comment session. This is communication from visitors. Citizens who desire to speak on matters not listed on the agenda tonight will be heard at this time. Citizens who desire to speak on agenda items will be heard when the agenda item is considered. If anyone wants to speak on an issue that's not on the agenda tonight. Close the public comment session. Minutes. Can we have a motion? Approve the minutes for the last session. Mr. Campbell, second. Mr. Mason.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rawlin?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Tomer?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Consideration of special use permit to operate a transitional living shelter at 341 Holbrook Street. Open the public hearing. Comments from the public. Come forth and identify yourself.
Good evening. I'm Alfreda Bennett Reeves. I'm the applicant for the special use permit, and we came about a year ago requesting this, and then it was tabled. And I hope that I have made the changes that you all were asking for. We revised the board. It was told to me that some of the council members were thinking that we were doing the board for our selfish gain, because some of the board members were my family. So we've revised the board, we've removed my mom, the board is still just three, but we've removed my mom, and we've added Robin Roark, who is 22-plus years' experience with nonprofit, she worked with Telemont. And we now have a board of, an advisory board, that is a strong part of this ministry. And I met with Captain Jones, I spoke to Captain Jones, spoke with Major Burke, and spoke to Officer Hatfield, because some of the neighbors were concerned about the crime. And the conclusion in the conversations with them really blessed me, because I have been assured that the location of the property is in one of the best locations in the city, because we are where four beats come together. And I was told that we made a call and said that we had a husband, a gentleman on our porch that wouldn't leave, within minutes we would have two to four officers, because they never send just one officer for domestic violence, and that really blessed me. And I'm trying to remember everything I needed to do. I met with the ministers, I met with them on the 19th of September, and they voted to give us their support. I spoke with Pastor Churns today, because they had not sent me anything in writing, and of course, I wouldn't be able to get it today, but if their word was not good, writing wouldn't be good either, so I think that their word was good. I think I've done everything, the 501(c)(3), when we revised the board and we, well, I thought that it had already gone, I had signed, but when the accountant looked at it, she wants us to revise the bylaws. So it's back on my desk to go out, hopefully, one day this week. I've got some things that are pressing that I've got to get finished, so it may be the first or the middle of next week, but I think we've addressed, I gave Ken that, we handled the parking issue, I gave Ken the business plan. I think we've done everything that we were asked to do.
Okay. Does council have any questions? Not debate, but just questions.
I saw in the planning commission report that you already received support from several organizations.
Yes, sir.
One of those was Walmart.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm curious to how you did that. Walmart is an online application, and you have to be a 501(c)(3) to receive it.
No, not Walmart. We went to Wells Fargo, and Wells Fargo said that they will partner with Walmart to give us personal items, to do like welcome bags, the branch manager at Wells Fargo, and she said they will partner with Walmart.
But you haven't received any support from Walmart directly?
I haven't asked. I have not, I have not taken, okay, look at what I'm saying.
I'm just, ma'am, I'm just reading the report in the planning commission. Mr. Gilley, do you recall in the planning commission report, I'm sorry, I'll wait to ask the public.
Let's wait, yeah, let's wait. Reverend Campbell?
May I explain, please? What we did, what I've done, is listed those who said that they would support us. I vote for, the domestic violence home is called Grandma's House. I have not taken one penny, not one bit of assistance from any person except family members, but I have commitments from them. They say that they will do, but I haven't taken anything until you all give me approval.
Reverend Campbell?
Yes, Ms. Bennett, my question to you, number one, is we have 41 notices that were sent out, and there are eight individuals who were favorited and eight who are against it. We asked him last time that you would try to communicate with the community to deal with those issues, so I heard you say a few things. That's quite a bit of complaint.
Well, but you know, Reverend Campbell, if you look at it, it's half and half. If it was two and two, four and four, it's half and half. I mean, the numbers sound high, but it's half and half. And I had met with them, not since the last meeting, because when I reached out, remember I told you, nobody was reaching back. It was suggested that I meet with the pastors, and I met with the pastors. The next meeting I had, I think it was the 19th of September, I looked at my notes today, it was the 19th of September last year. But the neighbors, I have spoken to some of the neighbors since we met, but I have not had a group meeting, the immediate, I've spoken with them.
One of the statements that you said from last time that you were here, you said that if it does not pass, then you would not come back to council about it. What changed your mind?
Well, it hasn't not passed.
Well, you said, if I'm not mistaken, you said you was not coming back, but I see you here, that's secondary.
But they tabled it, they didn't deny it. Mr. Tomer said if it was denied, that I would have to wait a year to come back, and I said that I would not come back if it was denied, not tabled.
Okay.
Okay, but now that you brought that up, let me go and address that. Yes, I would come back in a year, because since I was here, the comment was made that we were unorganized. Well, that may have been then, but that's not now. We are much more organized, and I much more see the need, and it is a vision that the good Lord gave me, it's a ministry. Our ministry is present help ministries. It is the vision of the octopus, the head is present help, it has eight arms, Grandma's House is one of the arms, and no, I will not stop pursuing to have this. And the reason for this particular property is because I do own it, and I do pay the mortgage, and if I'm going to be giving something away, I would give it to myself, rather than me pay rent to somebody else or have to buy another property, I would rather keep paying this mortgage like I've been doing for the past year, waiting for you all to say yes or no. Yes, I will come back. I do need to repent for that, because I have since learned better.
I remember when the House of Hope, home of the shelter, was in the process of coming to council, and one of the issues was the appearance of the occupants from the outside. Will they be hanging around, the actions or activities that would be going on? Do you have a plan of action similar to that, that if it is open, that there will be certain rules in place?
Oh, yes, sir.
Could you elaborate on that?
Yes, sir. We do have rules, and not only that, we also are in the process, I've been speaking with an owner on purchasing a property, that we can do date activities for them, have places for them to go, they will be permitted if they wanted to sit out in the back, but not on the front, because again, this place is supposed to be as secretive as possible. So you know, I don't need the people hanging out on the front.
If they're all in the back, would that be cased in, the KNC, to be open?
No, we have, it's an upper and a lower, it's a porch on the back, and then there's an area under the back porch where we can put chairs and people can sit too. You know, we would like to be able to, and I understand what we have to do, but now I would be able, like to have fun activities for them to do too, because even though they are in this place, they still are human, and they got feelings, and they need to be made to feel better. You know what I'm saying, made to feel a part, not to be constantly reminded of their situation where they are. They need to be able to heal.
The complaints that I've gotten from some of the citizens who have contacted me on their street is that it's a historical district, and they're trying to move it forward, and they feel that having a homeless shelter there would not assess what they are trying to do for the future now.
I'm so glad you said that, Reverend. We are not going to be a shelter. We are going to be a home. That's the one thing the Lord told me. The word shelter is already stigmatized. We're not going to be a shelter. We're not going to be a handout, we're going to be a hand up. When people go to shelters, they just give them anything, treat them any kind of way. We're not doing that. The Lord said to me that they have to be made to feel like they have been to a resort. No, we're not treating them like a shelter.
Thank you, Ms. Vice Mayor.
Ms. Rawlin?
Yes, sir. I see in our write-up you have a budget per year of $132,750. Can you elaborate on some of your donors, or not maybe not names, but do you have people that you feel confident you can raise that much money each year?
Not from just the persons on the, on the, on that have committed to helping us, no. I don't think that. I think, though, from fundraisers, from grants and et cetera, yes, I do feel we can raise it, because other organizations have done it. It's been proven that it can be done.
All right, but you don't have any working capital now set aside?
I got a few dollars.
All right, but $132,000, and most of that is in, most businesses is in salaries, it's in personnel.
Right. But we have people who are willing to be volunteers to do this work. We have spoken to educators, we had a director in place, we have people who are willing to volunteer until we raise money to be able to pay them. Yes.
All right, most of the time, when I see small businesses start up, if they don't have enough working capital, they fail, because it takes a long time to...
I'm so glad you said that.
...raise money for a living, and it's tough to raise money.
I agree with you, but I'm a small business owner. I have made it through the depression, I made it through the recession, and everything else that was real. I have made it through that. I'm down to one person in my office, but I'm still there, so I have learned something about juggling, budging, budgeting, budgeting, and struggling. I am a small business owner, I know how to do that.
Right, but you still think you can raise $132,000 a year?
Yes, sir. And I may not be able to raise it in a lump sum, but yes, sir. I do believe that.
Okay.
Any other questions from council, or from her? Okay, now, any other public comments for or against? Come forth.
Thank you for letting me make this presentation this evening. I'm speaking against. My name is Bichetta Merritt, and my home is 364 Harbrook Street, which is directly across the street from 341. And I'd like to share several points. Mrs. Bennett made reference to the fact that citizens were concerned about the burglaries in the community. And one thing that she said in last year's meeting was that only empty homes had been burglarized, but that is not the case. Three families were burglarized on two separate occasions while they were at church and at work, and this means that someone was watching closely. And we really believe that if her wonderful establishment, as she calls it, not a shelter but a home, is known, and it will get out, then we know that there will be people casing this home, and sitting and watching our coming and our going, and deciding what they're going to do. They may not do it themselves, but they may drop a word to someone else. Number two, we want families to live on our street so that we can continue the neighborhood feeling that we have, and the house next to 341 was recently purchased by a family, so we feel like we're on the move. Harbrook and Raw Streets... Harbrook and Raw Streets were designated historic streets, and this title is very important to us, because on Harbrook Street, we have persons who are third, fourth, and fifth generation owners of their homes. And we really want a residential community. Now, you may say, well, how could this community be residential if Cunningham and Hughes Field Home were there and Mrs. Merrill's Beauty Rom? Well, that is because that these establishments were in the homes of these individuals, and this is basically one of the few places they could be, in the fifties and the sixties in Danville. But that is not the case anymore. Danville is a truly open city. And so, this particular facility, home, as Mrs. Bennett says, can be anywhere. We want our community to remain residential. We want to preserve our community as a neighborhood. We played on the street, we went to school and to church on the street. And we celebrated holidays and supported each other in the good, bad, and prosperous times. And as the good Vice Mayor said, you all want to do the best for Danville. And we hope that you will do the best for our neighborhood and vote no. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Other public comments?
Good evening, council and staff. My name is Gary Davis, and I reside at three oh seven Harbrook Street. And I'm opposed to this particular special use permit. I moved back home about twenty years ago, and one of the things that has concerned me a lot, and it's sort of a cumulative impact that's occurred in the neighborhood is, you know, over the years, we have allowed some of the homes to be torn down. There is now parking lots there on the street. A lot of this is created by some of the churches and the institutions that are there. Recently re-granted the Yancey House a special use permit, which does not have parking. So, my point with the parking situation is that it is impacted, but we have grown to be accustomed to this, because that's the nature of the neighborhood. We have four or five churches there, and at different times, it is impacted. One of the things that I heard last year during the application process was that some permits have been granted by one of the neighbors for parking there. I have some concern about the future of that particular property. I think council needs to look at that a little bit closer, because they need continued parking much beyond this year, next year, and so forth. Ms. Merritt had talked about the historic designation. You know, we've done a lot of effort, a lot of people have put an effort into getting that neighborhood granted as a historic district. It's now on the walking tour. People do walk, I've been home sometimes in daytime, and I see different people conducting tours. This is very good for the neighborhood. You know, outside of the African-American community, a lot of people, the greater community, weren't knowledgeable about this neighborhood and its history, and we'd like to see that process continue. You know, I also want, at first I was very reluctant to come up here tonight, because I really want to commend Ms. Bennett for her efforts. I think that, you know, they have a lot of merit. But at the same time, I'm really not in favor for, you know, this type of use in our neighborhood, given the, you know, the nature of the neighborhood. Thanks a lot for your turn.
Thank you. Other comments?
Speaking of the property next to us, the owner, I've already checked into that, and if it hits the market, I plan to own it. I've spoken to the current owner and asked them to give us a price. They have not. And I have checked on some of the things that he suggested that you all check on, because I need the property, I need the land, and I know that I can take care of it. And speaking of the neighborhood and the children and et cetera, every day we go to the house to cut grass or whatever we're gonna do, it is somebody's children coming up, cutting through our yard. It is somebody driving through our driveway, they use it as a throughway. When we move over, we will not have a problem with that. The breaking in, the people that are not there, the women and their children, will not cause anybody to break into anybody's house. Hopefully, they will be able to find comfort and walk into some of the churches, 'cause they can only be with us up to sixty days. But every day, there is a yard full of children when we go over there, coming through, coming through. I spoke to the neighbor on this side, who was in the process of purchasing, she had not purchased. She said she had no problem, because she too had been a domestic violence victim and had once lived in a shelter. So, I'm trying to dot all the i's this time and cross all the t's.
Thank you.
What's the present use of the facility? What are you using it for today?
Nothing, nothing. It had been rental property.
Vacant building?
Yes, sir, because I've been vacant waiting for this. And before we had rented it, we had it rented, and they had several children, and they did a massive amount of damage to our property. And we've just been waiting, I got the contractors lined up, I got HVAC lined up, I've got everybody lined up, because what I do for Grandma's house will be totally different than what I would do if I was just going to rent it again. And let me, let me say this too, Mr. Gilstrap. I reached out to Mr. Newman, 'cause I had been calling them to meet them, and I went to him and met him, introduced myself, shared with him what we wanted to do and how we wanted to be able to work with them. Okay, I wanted them to know that. We are not in competition.
Good, okay. Any other public comments for or against? Close the public hearing, can we have a motion? A motion from council. We need a motion.
We need to need an ordinance approving or adoption of a resolution not approving.
Ms. Shanks.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt, that we not adopt an ordinance granting a special use permit to operate a transitional living shelter in accordance with Article three E, Section C, Item twenty-five of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia, nineteen eighty-six, as amended for three forty-one Harbrook Street.
There a second to that order? Mr. Tomer, so this is ordinance not to adopt?
Yeah, so an aye vote here would be in support of denying the special use permit. Just to be clear.
Discussion.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I would be voting no. It seems as though Ms. Bennett is correct, she's done some of the things that we've asked at the last. And one of the reasons that I'm voting no is because some of the same residents of the community was here last year. And it seems like I would really like to see Ms. Bennett build a relationship with some of these residents in the community, and that still is not happening. As Mr. Davis spoke, they're getting there. He complimented her in what she's trying to do, and I think they're getting there, so I'd be voting no. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You'll be voting yes, yes.
Yes, he changed.
He changed it, I know.
He'll be voting for the current.
I'll vote no.
Wait, for denying?
Denying.
You'll be voting yes.
That's a aye.
Mr. Gilstrap, do you have questions?
But I will vote supportive of the motion as read by Mr. Shanks, because I know how difficult it is to receive a five oh one C three. That's not an overnight process. Even if they got it in today, it would probably take eight months or more to hear from the IRS. Secondly, I'm very concerned about the list of supports. I counted of four organizations on those list of supports, that they will not fund you unless you're a five oh one C three. So, that would raise some red flags, but I would strongly suggest that you obtain the five oh one C three first, and then approach us.
Mr. Tomer.
Yeah, I always try to give a simple test whenever I'm voting for a zoning ordinance or special use permit, would I want this in my neighborhood? And I kinda agree with Mr. Davis and the other, the lady that spoke before us, sorry. Thank you, Mary. I agree with them. I don't know that I would want this in my neighborhood or want it across the street from me. I think that they've, they've tried to restore the neighborhood to the glory that it was and bring it back. And I wanna keep that momentum going and keep, keep the neighborhood in the position that it is and let it grow and prosper. And I don't know that this, this does that, and there's too many neighbors in the area opposed to it, and so, I have to put myself in their shoes. Your home is your safe place, and you wanna feel happy and secure. And so, I will be voting yes to deny the special use permit.
Other discussion? Very good, we'll have a roll call then.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders? Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Tomer?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Good, now, am I wrong, Mr. Whitfield, but it's no longer a year to come back?
That's correct.
What is the timeframe to come? Four months?
I believe four months.
Go before planning commission again if you so desire. It's no longer a year, wait. All right, let's go on. Consideration of adjusted utility rates and charges for electric service effective July first, not two thousand and fourteen. May we have a motion? Mr. Rowley?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I move that we adopt a ordinance adjusting utility rates and charges for electrical service effective July one, two thousand and fourteen, for final adoption.
Second, Ms. Shanks. Discussion. Ms. Gilstrap.
Last meeting, we asked for alternatives. Also, at the last meeting, we asked for rate comparisons, of which we got, thank you, Joe. I'm a little concerned that earlier in our meeting with the consultant, that they indicated we was among the lowest rates, if not, they're still the low rate. But under a rate comparison, we are not. So, it seems to me that we're purchasing, what, seventy-five?
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one percent of our power from other power source. So, it seems to me that we're the middle person. And you know, always in business, you try to eliminate the middle person to save money. So, I'm concerned that we're going to increase the rates, yet another power company could sell it to our citizens and businesses for less than we could. That's major concern.
Reverend Campbell.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. I am very concerned, and have talked to quite a few citizens in our community, some saying that, which I do understand, we need to go ahead and increase it. And of course, I've had quite a few people speaking to me of not increasing the rate. What I would like to propose to council is an amendment to this resolution that the increase for residential, which is one point six two percent, that it would be altered by keeping the industrial flat at zero, because the industrial is being reduced by four point, four point one four percent. If we would keep that at zero and take that four point one percent and funds that they have calculated to be transferred to the residential, then we'll be able to bring that down from one point six two percent, house may even come out flat. I don't feel that the citizens, with all of the increases that they've had this year and other issues on other things, they've been hit mighty hard. And we have too many senior citizens in our area. Poverty rate is really high, really, really high. And I, and some people say, well, by you being a minister, you just have too much of a compassionate heart. I'm sorry about that. That's the way I've been made, the way you wanna look at it. I'm just sorry about that, and I see too many hurting people in our community. So, if you think that I'm too compassionate or just whatever, I would just like for us to look at the four percent that is decreasing, the industrial fee, that we will make that flat at zero, keep it like it is, and transfer that deduction to the residential, that we can be, hopefully, that we'll keep that with no increase.
Okay, that's an amendment, so it takes priority. Is there a second for that amendment?
I don't know, we don't even know any kind of revenue projections off.
We need a second before we can debate it, I guess that would be the next question.
A second.
There's a second, now we can ask questions and debate.
Yeah, I understand Reverend Campbell's position on this, and Councilman Jones. I think it's really important to realize, there are a couple of things that you have to keep in mind. Residential customers have residential rates, which have been low for years and years, and actually were low during the time that we lost money on this power cost adjustment over the last four years. But most importantly, commercial rates are high compared to other municipalities and other utility companies as well. Commercial customers also have, you can't just look at the kilowatt hour charge, they also have a demand charge, which is a substantial charge. So, where it looks like, it may appear that the residential customer has gotten a larger increase than the commercial customer, it's not necessarily the case. The fact is that the commercial customer, depending on how big he is or she, that commercial customer is paying this large demand charge, and the bigger they are, the larger the charge. So, it's important to keep in mind that why it's important that the commercial utility rates stay competitive just as it is for the residential, is that's what companies look at as they come to town. So, to rob Peter to pay Paul in this case would not be a wise decision, and I would encourage that we not approve this amendment.
Other comments, Reverend Campbell.
Mr., I appreciate your statement, Councilman Shanks. I'm not saying that I want to hurt the commercial, the industrial industry. I'm just saying, keep it flat. I'm not saying increase it or decrease it. I'm saying just keep it like it is, that's all I'm saying.
I understand, and my point is though, if you don't, if you take away an increase here and don't add an increase somewhere else, then you can't balance. So, you can't just leave that at one rate, and then, when we built a budget around raising that rate, and then leave the other commercial rate at the same level. You just can't do that. You've got to be able, first of all, Danville, Mr. Gilstrap made the point about a middleman. Danville buys power, that's what we buy, we sell power. And we have to sell that power at the cost plus the rate of return to the stockholder or the taxpayer. So, it's very important that we stay competitive, and if we can't stay competitive, then I agree with Mr. Gil, Councilman Gilstrap, we need to get out of the business. But that business right now, or in the past, has been the goose that lays the golden egg for our budget. And for the last three or four years, the reserves of that department, Power and Light, lost cash reserves because city council, which I voted against, has gone to that well, gotten money for blight eradication, gotten money for economic development. That reserve fund should never be allowed to get down low. That was a mistake. We are responsible for that. We made that decision. So, we also have to be responsible as stockholders or board of directors, if you will, of this power company, to pay our, pay our bills. And the only way we can do this, unfortunately, due to the mistakes that we made, the only way to pay our bills is to... way to pay our bills is to go up with this plan here. And unfortunately, that's not the end of it. And unfortunately, power costs are going to continue to go up regardless of what we do. We've got to do a better job of managing this utility or we need to get out of the business.
One question.
Follow.
Mr. Shanks, do you feel that we have not been competitive?
We have been. As of December, January of this year, no, we're not competitive.
Mr. Tom.
But I think what's going to happen is the other locale, the other power companies have already put in requests for increases with the general assembly. So later on in the year, it's going to flush itself out and will be where everyone else is. We're just doing our rate increases sooner because we don't go through the bureaucracy that the Appalachian, Old Dominion has to go through to get a rate passed. And so they're going to be, I mean, they've requested, one requested an over six percent increase. And there's increases that are going to go down the pipeline. And to respond to what Councilman Gilstrap said, the middleman, this council, five years ago, attempted to get away from the middleman with the Prairie State coal plant. It may have been six years ago or more. And we didn't have a crystal ball at the time to know the EPA regulations that were going to attack the coal industry. We didn't. There was no way we would have known that. And so not only did that slow down that plant coming online, but it drove up the cost of that plant. And ourselves and other localities are experiencing that. But we did try to get out of the middleman and produce more of our own power. You know, I argued about this the last meeting, and I'm not going to regurgitate what I said, but all I'll say is this. As council members, we have two duties. And when I ran for council eight years ago, I promised people I'd do everything I can, I could do to keep the electric rates low. We have that duty. And as a council member, I've done that. I voted against several increases. But we also have a bigger duty, and that is to be the stewards of the financial interests of this city. And if we vote against this rate increase, we don't have a way to pay for these bills. No one's offered a real alternative to pay for our bills. And so, in my opinion, it's very irresponsible to vote no without any kind of sound alternative that can handle this because we will drop our cash reserves below the minimum amount in the utility fund, and it'll put our bond rating at risk, it'll put our ability to borrow money to fix our infrastructure at risk, at risk. And it is a, it is a bad long-term decision. Utility rates are going to go up for everyone across this country. It's going to happen, unfortunately. It is what is going on in America. And as we seek cleaner energy sources, it's just going on. And I wish there was something I could do about it. I don't want one of my last votes on this council to be raising utility rates, but I don't want one of my last votes on this council to leave this city in poor financial conditions. And that's what I would do if I vote against this. And so I don't know that I have another choice.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Shanks, I just want to thank you for the clarity. And I think you made it very plain for me, one of the reasons why, and I agree with you, Mr. Tomer, I don't want to debate this anymore either, but Mr. Shanks, you hit it right on the head. One of the reasons that I have been in my mind wrestling with this, as Councilman Campbell stated, people are having some tough time, is because we, the council, that mistake, like you stated, was made by us. And I was just trying to figure out a way, why, since we, the council, made that mistake, how it is that we want to put these responsibilities on the people in our community. And I thank you for the way that you put that. Thank you, Vice. Thank you, Mr. Shanks.
Yeah, I have a question. And the amendment that we're going to vote on, after that is voted on, will we be able to continue discussion or did we go straight into?
Depends on what the vote is, if it's, if it passes.
Well, I'd like to speak on the issue as a whole, but if I'm not going to get a chance after the amendment, then I guess I'll go ahead and do it now. That's one.
Well, you would either be able to make discussion on this original amendment, this original motion, if the amendment doesn't pass, or on the motion as amended, if the amendment does pass.
So there'll be two, so we would have an opportunity?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, I'll wait.
Any other comments on the amendment? Very well, it's up to call.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Oh, wait.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Jones?
Wait, are we voting for the amendment?
The amendment.
On the amendment.
And you want to state that again so we'll be clear?
What are you voting, what are we voting?
We're voting on his amendment, Councilman Campbell's amendment.
Only the amendment. Oh, yes.
Yes. Vice Mayor Miller?
On the amendment?
On the amendment.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
No.
Mayor Saunders? Mr. Shanks?
No.
Mr. Tomer?
No.
Mr. Vogler?
No.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
No.
Okay, the amendment fails. Right, amendment fails. Now we're back to the original motion, which is ordinance adjusting utility rates and charges for electric service effective July 1, 2014. We'll discuss this now, the original amendment.
We read the discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And I apologize, this may be, take a couple of minutes, but this is an important issue, so I want to make sure that it's clear why I feel, and I think some of us feel the way that we do about it. You know, unlike some of the votes that we take down here, this is an issue that affects everyone in our city. The rising utility costs are becoming a serious burden for a city that still has an unemployment rate higher than what I'd like to see and a poverty rate that is higher than anyone would like to see. So I take this issue very seriously. And it's one of the reasons why I tried to present numerous alternatives to the proposal we have tonight. When we were in work session, I went down three or four different things that I'd hoped would help prevent this. You know, we found out that none of those were a viable option. That's why I was hopeful that Vice Mayor Miller's proposal could be a solution. We found out that that wasn't a viable option. That's why I was hopeful that some of my colleagues on council would be able to find an alternative that we hadn't already thought of. And with all due respect to Reverend Campbell, I still haven't heard a viable option that will pay off the debt that we have right now. So as I said at our last meeting, not one of us up here, not one of us up here wants to increase utilities one penny on our citizens. And last year, there was a proposed bus fare increase that came before council, and I adamantly opposed that. You know, I helped find a way to prevent that. And I fought that increase because I knew there were people in our city who were really hurting, and those were the people who primarily use our transit system. In that scenario, we were able to find an alternative, and we chose it. But in this case, again, our alternative to pay off this debt is a blank piece of paper. There would, we've been, yet to be presented with one that will fill the $9 million hole that we're in right now. So I want to be clear about this before we vote. Voting no tonight without presenting any type of viable alternative to paying off the debt that is accumulating as we speak, means you're voting yes in the future to higher taxes, more debt, and even higher utility bills than what we're discussing right now. Because that's what the result's going to be. We have been told unequivocally that that is what's going to happen. You know, we're not Washington DC. We can't print our own money and keep going deeper and deeper into debt. We have to pay our bills. We have to balance our budget. We don't have a choice in that. So again, you know, we're sitting at $9 million in debt right now. Even with the modest changes that we're talking about tonight, we've been told that number's going to reach $15 million before it begins to turn around. We can't ignore this issue and hope that it goes away. I wish, you know, I could wave a magic wand and, you know, we would be out of this. You know, if you do a Google search, and some of the council members talked about other utility increases that are coming or have come, if you just do a two-minute Google search on utilities increase, you're going to find hundreds of localities across the country that are facing the same exact situation that we're in right now. Most of them already had to raise their rates to account for a rising energy cost and increased demand. And it's coming, and I think it was Councilman Shanks pointed out, or Councilman Tomer. As the coal industry continues to be essentially put out of business, there's going to be a trade-off. That trade-off comes in higher energy cost. And it was pointed out, roughly 70% of Danville Utilities expenditures is to pay for purchasing energy. The higher the cost of energy is, the more Danville Utilities has to pay. Danville has roughly 16,000 homes, we were told at a meeting a couple of weeks ago. And of those, over 50%, over half of the homes in this city are 50 years old or older. So we have an old housing stock, and a lot of those homes are not energy efficient, they're not, you know, they're drafty. That's a contributing factor to why the utility bills seem to be higher in our city. If you look at the rates, the rates themselves, they're still, you know, in the ballpark of other ones, but it's our average monthly bill that seems to be so much higher than other localities. It's one of the reasons why I've been a big supporter of the Home Save rebate program that Danville Utilities does. It gives people an opportunity to upgrade their home, to become more energy efficient. And Danville Utilities gives you a rebate for doing that. And I encourage more people to take advantage of it. And I'll just close with saying this. Two years ago, when I was elected to council, I had a lady come up to me the night of the election. And I mean, she came up, she grabbed me by the hand, she looked me in the eye, and I'll never forget it, she said, "Lee, when you get into office, I want you to remember the old saying, and that's, what's right is not always popular, and what's popular is not always the right thing to do." You know, after five years of not raising the base rate, we're now deeply in debt. And we can't afford to avoid the issue and hope that it goes away. It's not. It's a reality that we're faced with. And I've not missed a single city council meeting in the two years that I've been on here. But believe me, this is a vote I wish I didn't have to take. But I was elected to do a job. People elected me to show up and to make tough choices, to be here for the hard votes and to do the right thing for our city, not just for right now, but for the big picture and the future. And that's what I'm going to do because, again, if we vote no and there is no alternative, it's going to be much worse on people a year from now, two years from now, three years from now. And I can't in good conscience do that. Thank you.
Other comments? Mr. Rowley?
Yes. I think the word mistake is a little harsh. You know, hindsight's 20-20. When we were looking at Blythe and look at some economic development things, I thought that was the way to go. To me, it's congestion charges. Or I'd be honest with you, I'd never heard of them. I know we'd had some, small ones, but 4.8 million, I think that's what turned it around right there. And we were going through a policy we all agreed upon. We were going to do this on a gradual increase, so it kind of leveled the playing field. And we were going to go in debt to begin with and then come out on top three years down the road. And we got hit with a 4.8 million charge that we got to pay for. Also, as other, Mr. Shanks has said, and Mr. Tomer, and others, clean energy, folks, is great, but it costs money. This country had more than 50% of its energy by coal-fired plants. And now, the federal government wants to take this country to clean energy. I don't dispute that. It's great, but it costs money. And coal-fired plants was where we were going. We brought up the Prairie State. And with the information we had those years ago, it looked like a great bet to do. Federal government said, no, now it's got to be cleaner, 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 cleaner. It didn't come online when we wanted it to. And so we didn't get those lower rates when we wanted them. And it also cost way, way more, billions of dollars more than we thought it would cost. So this comes from the utility commission. They are a good group of men, and now women, that look at these issues. And I think this is something that we're not being physically responsible if we don't say yes to this. Thank you.
Mr. Shanks?
You're right, Councilman Riley, it may have been an overstatement, say it was a mistake. It was a decision we made that was bad.
Right.
I argued against the level of the power cost adjustment because I thought it was set too low. And I didn't know it was going to come in late, but it was set too low because it did come in late. And I didn't prevail in that argument. Congestion is something that I'm scared to death of from here on. And it could happen this summer. It probably will happen more often in the summertime than the winter because of air conditioning as opposed to our heating. A lot of our heat here in town is gas. But truth of the matter is, is if we're going to continue to operate a power company, we're going to have to make tough decisions, and they're going to be tougher and tougher because congestion's going to come up more often. And as everybody has said, the EPA regulations on coal is just going to drive things through the roof. It's going, I mean, they're not building any more coal power plants. So if we can't make tough decisions, then we definitely need to get out of the business. All right. Finally, I just want to say that we also need to use cash reserves in a more appropriate manner. And it's been used in a very good way from the utility fund, actually from the power, electric fund. But we drew that number down too low. And that's why when you set limits, you need to stay way above the limit. And we have been, in my opinion, made some bad decisions there. Thank you.
Mr. Campbell?
When we say congestion, that's why definitely, which I know I'm not being redundant, but you hit it right on the head, Fred. Because of the uncertainty, even with having a hot summer, the congestion that's going on, that's why we need to look at what we was talking about on the amendment. Because it's more likely that it's going to continue, and our citizens, the residents, is going to be hit more than industry. Thank you, sir.
Oh, gosh. Mr. Shanks, you revert.
Yeah, I just, one comment about congestion. There's, it's a real problem. It's going to be a real problem. There is, the only thing we can do is be creative and, I think, out of the box in terms of getting sources of power within our service area. And that's critical, I think. You know, I've been trying to figure out, I talked to a utility commission member this past weekend. Can we build, do we have any potential to build a natural fire plant? And of course, he knew the numbers and said there's no way Danville could get into power. But we need, we, if we want to continue to own this utility, we need to find ways to get around the congestion charge, and it will benefit all of our customers.
Mr. Tomer?
As far as the amendment goes, I just, I don't know any kind of revenue projections or to be able to make a decision up or down. It just, it sounds, it may sound appealing, but I don't have any numbers behind it to know what's going to go on with it. And, I mean, I'll leave you with this. If you, the people that are going to, the council members that are going to vote no to this, how are you going to pay for this fall replacement to our system should a natural disaster, a brownout, or some sort of issue happen that hits our electrical service and our distribution? How are we going to pay for it when our cash reserves are at or below zero?
Could I respond?
Yes.
Yes. Adam, you're most definitely right. I'm not talking about a reduction of funds coming into our system. I'm just saying that the deduction of commercial, keep that flat. And whether that revenue is, let's pass it on to our citizens. That's all that I'm saying. I'm not saying.
I understand, but.
I'm not saying.
Well, guys, that's already been debated and voted down, so I don't think we need to.
He brought the question back up, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Okay. I understand, but you.
We said we're not going, he said we're killing. I'm fine.
All right, that's been debated, and that amendment's dead. So if that amendment is dead, what, it gets back to what I was saying. If you vote this down, how are you going to pay for any major repairs to our system in the fall, should we have some natural or other disaster that hits our distribution center? Okay?
Gilstrap?
We don't have a way.
Still haven't heard any viable alternative.
Oh.
Finger.
I understand the amendment, Mr. Campbell, Reverend Campbell. However, we are already at one of the highest revenue, power cost for industry. So if we're going to get our citizens So if we're going to get our citizen jobs to pay for their utilities, then we're going to have to keep our business industry utilities at a minimum. There is no reason someone would select Danville to build a major company here when their power bill is going to cost them twenty thousand dollars a month, and maybe even five thousand dollars a month more in Danville than it would some of the other areas where their power costs are less. You know, it's pay me now or pay me later. Somehow, we've got to cover this. Some people said mistake, some says a bad decision. Either way, it was a decision made that we've got to overcome. And I have not seen an alternative to overcome that, a viable alternative, and keep our competitive edge for industry.
Even if we didn't fund Blight or take the a million dollars for economic development, we'd still be in the hole past the nine million. We'd be at twelve million negative instead of fifteen. So we can debate whether using the money to fight Blight and fight economic decision, economic development, or help economic development was a bad or good decision. It wouldn't matter, we'd still be twelve million in the hole instead of fifteen, and we'd still be in the same situation we are now, well beyond the maximum debt load that we're supposed to take on. I just want to make that point clear.
Mr. Walker?
Yeah, two final points. Again, I want to emphasize regardless of how this vote goes tonight, please, I encourage everybody out in the city, take advantage of the Home Save Rebate Program that Danville Utilities offers. The energy-efficient things that are on that list that you can buy and get a rebate back for buying will lower your utility bills. It will lower it, and it will bring down a lot of the cost. And I know that there's people out there who are being as energy efficient as possible, and they're still having to pay. I'm not saying that that's a cure-all for everybody, but it will help. So I, and I'm not sure that enough people are taking advantage of it, so I, please, try and spread the word. And the second thing is, is again, I come back to, there is no alternative. It's either vote this tonight, I want people to understand this. We vote this tonight, or there's going to be a vote in probably the very near future, a year from now, two years from now, that is going to be substantially higher of a rate increase to make up the huge difference in debt that we're going to be in. If we don't make modest changes now, it's make small incremental changes now, or unequivocally, we've been told, you are going to have a utility company that ceases to exist because it's going to go bankrupt. Or you're going to have to raise rates on people so high that you're really going to be hurting people. And that's something I don't ever want to have to do. So the responsible thing to do, whether it is the popular thing to do or the thing that any of us want to do tonight, the fiscally responsible thing to do to pay our bills is to vote yes on this. Thank you.
Other comments? Getting near the end here.
I'm just going to make a couple, two or three short comments, because I wasn't here last time. Number one is, I remember I told you about the refrigerator we got recently when ours died. We got a rebate, got an energy-efficient, we got several hundred dollars. So that's something we need to really emphasize in this city. A lot of old homes, they lose power, wintertime, summertime. You need to get help and insulate your homes. Number two, I think it was a mistake we made. I remember sitting in the utilities and later in council, and hearing our consultant at the time tell us it was a wise thing to do to under-price power and leave your power cost adjustment low, and then later on, you can make it up. To me, that's psychologically not sensible. You don't lower power here for six months and then raise it way up here six months later. Because what are the public going to remember? They're going to remember the raise, not here. We'd have been more responsible at that time and kept the prices at a more reasonable level. We'd still be in this mess because of the congestion charge. That hit us like a perfect storm, but we wouldn't be as bad a shape as we are now. So we made a mistake there. Part of it was our consultants, I don't know why, you know, and, you know, they said this, and we objected to it, but we still voted on it, voted for it. Dumb move on our part. Because we should have been pricing the power responsibly two or three years ago. We wouldn't have been so far behind. And one thing that really grieves me, I used to tell people for years that I know Appalachian power rates were less, were more than ours, and they have been for years. Because I have property up the lake, and I know the rates were much higher. And they did ask for a rate increase, they've got their rate increase this year. They got it as of May first, ten point eight cents. So they can't get another rate increase this year. But now, we are higher than them. And so we're suddenly, we're not very efficient. And it begs the question whether we need to get out of the business providing power if we're going to be that much higher than the other guys, the big guys. So maybe that's something we need to look at in the future. But right now, we're, what we got is what we got. So let us vote.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders? Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Tomer?
Aye.
Mr. Bogler?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
No.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Good, that carries, let us go on. Ah, consideration of amending the city code to adopt the new Stormwater, Virginia Stormwater Management Program Ordinance Permit Fee Schedule effective July 1st, 2014. Do I have a motion? Mr. Tom?
Vice Mayor, I move that we adopt the ordinance amending or interdaining Chapter 13 entitled Erosion and Sediment Control by amending Article 2 and adding an Article 3 of the Code of City of Danville, Virginia, 1986, as amended effective July 1st, 2014, for final adoption.
Second. Mr. Rock? Debate? Yes, Mr. Campbell?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I just wanted to state that, two things, I'll be brief. First of all, well, three things. First of all, this is a state mandate. So council pretty much, as a majority, has to pass this ordinance, or something similar to it. Second point, we adopting, we are adopting tonight the ordinance as it was modeled by the state. I remember in one work session, I asked if all the fees were exactly like the state stated, and the answer was affirmative. I've been doing some looking, and I'm not so sure that's exactly correct. And I hope that as we put this, I'm sure this will pass, but as we put this in motion, we revisit the fees for a moment after we make the vote sometime down the road. For instance, a certain percentage of it goes to the locality, and a certain percentage of it goes to the state. I believe it's twenty-eight percent goes to the state. So Fairfax County is collecting the same number that Danville, Virginia is collecting. Now, the twenty-eight percent of this model number has to go to the state. So that's a number that I apparently can't change. But my concern is we're setting the local portion of the fee too high. And I think we need to see if that is an option that we did have and didn't realize, or whether I'm off track. And the only reason I say that is it's considerably more expensive to develop property in Northern Virginia and Tidewater and Richmond. And it's, people are paid considerably more to do those services and review those plans. So I, I don't think it's necessary for Danville to collect the same amount of total fee that it is for Tidewater in Northern Virginia, because we certainly don't have that cost limit. The third point I wanted to make is that this is an ordinance that is mandated by the state. But it's another ordinance that's going to slow things down. And, you know, every time you open a door, there's something in front of you that's slowing you down. In real estate development, and other things. And it's just frustrating to me, but I know the ordinance has to pass. But in the, in the interest of my clients, and in the interest of people that do the type of work I do, I'm going to vote no.
Other comments?
Can we get an answer to Mr. Shanks' question of, we have to establish this fee? Or can we adopt a different, lower fee?
If I can give us some help here?
What was the question?
The question is, the fee is divided, and I didn't think this was going to come up tonight. I thought it'd be studied. I mean, I brought it up, but I didn't think it'd go further tonight other than being looked at further. But the question is this, there's a twenty-eight percent and a seventy-two percent. I think twenty-eight goes to the state, seventy-two. So let's just call it a hundred dollars. So the city has to send twenty-eight to the state.
Correct.
Does the city have to collect the other seventy-two dollars, or could they collect fifty?
Would you identify yourself for the public, sir?
I'm sorry, I'm Brian Donovan, I'm with the Public Works Engineering Department.
Thank you.
We can modify the fees, but we have to go in front of the Soil and Water Conservation Board to get that approved.
But it could, I'm sorry.
So we can modify the fees up or down. The state still gets their twenty-eight percent based on the fee schedule as they devise, but we can adjust that seventy-two percent part.
That's, thank you.
Within what range, though? Do we have a limit, how we can justify?
I don't think there's any limit, but you have to give a justification. And part of the, the purpose of the fees is to help fund our program. So if you, if you essentially took the fees down to just using the hundred dollar figure, if you took it down to twenty-eight dollars, they're going to ask how you're going to fund your program. So you have to be able to justify the funding of the program.
Sure.
So we can fund our program here, or we can let the state do it, right? Is that?
No, we have to.
We have to do it, we have to fund it here, okay. Because I thought there was a clause initially, that the state, if we, if you abrogated or gave up your management, that the state could, would run it for you.
We don't have that option.
We didn't want that.
Okay, we don't have that option.
Mr. Campbell?
No, I just want to underscore the fact that it has to go to the state to reduce, to be able to reduce it.
So.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Twenty-eight percent of the fee has to go to state.
Right.
The state doesn't tell us how much the fee is, we set that fee. And it has to go before the Conservation to get it approved.
Soil and Water Conservation Board, yes.
If we lowered that fee, let me ask you this, couldn't we lower that fee and still cover our cost?
That's a tricky question, because based on the number of permits right now that would be issued for this particular program, there's, realistically, we only have like five permits right now in the city of Danville. Back in 2008, we probably had fifteen plus. So it's really going to depend, you know, if you let the fees like they are now, if we had that kind of workload that we had back in 2008, 2009, then it probably would go a long ways to fund the program. I would say right now, it's not going to.
So the fee we, you, we have established, our voting on tonight would not cover the cost of the program?
In my opinion, it will not.
The city's seventy-two percent would not cover the cost of the program.
Leave Mr. Campbell.
That was my question.
Okay. Who else had a question? Yes, Shanks?
Brian, it's his job, so I hesitate to argue with him. But, and I have, I have most respect for Brian. But right now, you're reviewing those plans now, aren't you?
That's correct.
Been doing it for a couple of years.
More than a couple, yes.
Yeah. So you draw a paycheck every day, every month?
Correct.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Without fee?
Yeah.
Other comments or questions?
Can I ask Fred a question, please? So Fred, with your proposal of keeping it or reducing it, and they would not be able to fund the program, you still feel the same way?
Well, I think I just answered the question. Brian has been doing this for four years now. And that's not all he does, but he's been doing it for, no, more than four years. And, and he draws a check already.
Can I add one thing to that?
Sure.
By giving us the program, we're taking on the administration of the permit, whereas right now, the state does the administration of the permit. So there's inspections, there's reporting requirements, there's, you know, new methodology that we talked about with the new stormwater design. So it's not really going to be like it is now as far as the time spent on this program.
There's more work.
It is going to be more work, and it's going to be additional effort, for sure.
Sure.
And that's what I was referring to. At the VML, when this first came up, they said you can, the state will do this for you, but you probably want to do it in your locality, and that's what we chose, or somewhere along the way. So we're going to administer the program. We could have abrogated to the state, let them run it, because that'd be a mess.
Well, that was early, that was an early comment by the state, but we have to take the program now. We're in MS4 community. All MS4s had to take it. So us, Lynchburg, Roanoke, we have to take it. Martinsville, they don't have to take it. Pennsylvania County didn't have to.
Unfortunately, our stormwater doesn't go into the Chesapeake Bay, and that's where it's all.
That's true, that is.
That's where it all originated.
That is a positive of the whole thing.
We're stuck with what we have. Any other comments?
The only person, the only person or company paying this fee are those that are developing a facility, or growing a facility, or expanding a facility.
Commercial development, commercial redevelopment.
So it's all development?
It does apply to new houses if it's in a common plan. And that's a whole nother thing that I don't think, probably ninety-five percent of the houses that have been built in the past ten years in the city would not experience that, that fee.
But now they, now they would.
If they were within this common plan definition. But I think the rules have been relaxed for the, for the single-family dwellings. That was just passed within the past couple of months, so.
Mr. Shanks? Yeah, I'm sorry for sidetracking. I really didn't mean to have this discussion in this chamber tonight, because we pretty much have to pass an ordinance. And I certainly just wanted to open that discussion for later. But I did want to point out, just for everyone's information, the fee schedule, I couldn't pull it up here as quick as I wanted to, but the fee schedule's in the package. And these aren't small fees, these are substantial roadblocks, substantial roadblocks that are coming down from the state, and the state's, I'm sure, getting pressure from the EPA. But for a developer, especially a local developer, they're substantial. And if we can help promote business in any way possible, I would hope that we would look at that. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments? Any comments? Roll call.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders? Mr. Shanks?
No.
Mr. Tomer?
Aye.
Mr. Bogler?
No.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
No.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye. Appointments. Consideration appointments to the city's boards and commissions. We'll have Reverend Campbell lead these for us.
And yes, sir, you can do it in one motion.
Uh-huh.
Instead of having nineteen separate votes.
In block, but he needs to read each one. Yes, he needs to read.
But I would need to read all nineteen.
All nineteen of them.
But one vote, not nineteen.
One vote on them.
May I move for consideration appointments to the city's boards and commission? Adopting resolution, reappoint Charles G. Ellis as a member of the Airport Commission. Resolution appointing Stephen Daniel as a member of the Airport Commission. Resolution appointing Walter Sheen Davis as a member of the Commission of Architectural Reviews to fill the unexpired term of Cynthia Kastling. Resolution reappointing Tammy Warren as a member of the Danville Community Policy and Management Team. Resolution reappointing Dr. G. H. Vaughn as a member of the Danville Community Policy and Management Team. Resolution reappointing James Bolton as a member of the Danville Development Authority. Resolution reappointing Anna Gillier as a member of the Danville Pacifician Community Service Board. Resolution appointing Cheryl Moyer as a member of the Danville Pacifician Community Service Board. Resolution appointing Constance N. Fletcher as a member of the Danville Pacifician Community Service Board. Resolution appointing Don Witter as a member of the Danville Utility Commission. Resolution reappointing H. Philip Smith as a member of the Danville Utility Commission. Resolution reappointing Robin M. Dapney as a member of the Social Services Advisory Board. Resolution appointing Michelle Young as a member of the Social Services Advisory Board. Resolution appointing Wesley Cleveland Fletcher as a member of the Social Services Advisory Board. Resolution appointing Alexis Etthard as a member of the Transportation Advisory Committee to fill the unexpired term of James Buckner. Resolution reappointing John Mooney as a member of the Transportation Advisory Committee. Resolution reappointing Wade E. Keaty as a member of Transportation Advisory Committee. Resolution reappointing Kenneth C. Gillie Jr. as a member of the WPBDC Technical Advisory Rule Transportation Center Advisory. Rule Transportation Center Advisory Committee. Resolution reappointing T. Renee Bu, Burton, or Borton as a member of the WPDC Technical Advisory Rule Transportation Citizen Advisory Committee.
Outstanding. We have a second from Mr. Rowley.
Please don't ask me to read the name.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Call.
Mayor Saunders? Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Toma?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Outstanding. I wanna thank every person that put their name up for these committees, and every person that's already on our boards and committees. You do an invaluable service for the city. And I think we've had a little uptick, tick in the number of people that are interested and starting to apply for our commissions, boards. So, thank you very much. On the new business, if somebody needs a break, or pursue on, gentlemen? Keep rolling? Keep going. All right, new business. Consideration approving a fixed-based operator agreement between General Aviation Incorporated and City of Danville for terminal office and maintenance hangar space at the Danville Regional Airport. I open the public hearing. Comments from the public? Close the public hearing? We have a resolution, Mr. Rowley?
Uh, Mr. Vice Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution approving a fixed-based operator agreement between General Aviation Incorporated and the city of Danville, a terminal office and maintenance hangar space at the Danville Regional Airport.
Second, Mr. Jones. Debates. Mr. Adelman, do you have any comments? He's good.
I just wanna, I just wanna make it known that we, we appreciate General Aviation. They went through, due to the FAA making us do all of our improvements the way they want them at the airport, they went through a very hard year. And we appreciate their efforts in doing that, and hope that this agreement is satisfactory, and maybe is slightly reduced to help them out. Thank you.
Any other comments? The roll call.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Toma?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Just a comment, I keep getting comments from people, why won't you lengthen the airport to have bigger planes come in? You know, a few years ago, we lengthened the airport, and the FAA gave us approval. Then they told us to shorten the airport. So, we had to shorten, or we received no funds to improve it. So, we were stuck. So, the reason the airport length, the runway length is where it is, is to ask your friendly FAA, Federal Aviation. Because they govern, you know, how long your runways can be. And again, if you don't play their game, they don't give you any funds, which is what, 80 or 90 percent of the funds, so.
10 million.
Yeah. We go on. Consideration amending the year 2020 land use plan and rezoning a 1.851 acres portion of 5555 riverside drive from SR suburban residential condition, well, HRC highway retail commercial. I open the public hearing. Come forth.
Well, good evening. My name is Rick Rowland. I'm the property owner and the applicant, along with my wife Brenda. Got a few very brief points that I'd like to make regarding my application, and I'll open myself up to questions. The subject 1.851 acre lot was subdivided off of a 12 acre tract that I purchased last December. The tract adjoins additional acreage owned by me that includes my residence. Although I was opposed to the construction of apartments on this land, I became convinced that some type of development would eventually occur there, and so I decided that I would take a proactive approach. As an adjoining landowner, my view was that I was in a unique position to create a win-win situation for myself, the neighborhood, the previous property owners, and perhaps even a small portion of the Danville economy. I purchased the tract to increase the acreage surrounding my residence with an eye towards encouraging suitable commercial development of this small portion fronting Route 58. I believe that the subject lot has great commercial potential, but little to no potential as a residential lot. I have proffered that 25 out of a possible 55 uses permitted under HRC or via a special use permit will not be allowed. Although I want to sell the lot for commercial use, I have limited my application to the types of businesses that I believe would be welcomed in the neighborhood. I derive a small income from the large Hardee's billboard located on the subject lot. The billboard company's lease is due for renewal in November, and would extend for at least another year. If I'm allowed to go forward, the lease will not be renewed, and the billboard will be demolished. In summary, my purchase of the original 12 acre tract has already benefited the neighborhood by ensuring that over 10 acres of the tract will remain undisturbed woodland. Additionally, I personally demolished the unsightly Carter's restaurant buildings, and have cleared and leveled the subject lot to make it more presentable and saleable. This progress has required substantial effort and expenditures on my part. As a side note to that, from some of it I couldn't hear, but Mr. Shanks' comments about the stormwater situation and the permit fees and stuff, this was an eye-opener to me. The expenditures weren't substantial to get to where it is now, not only the permit fees themselves, but the engineering work and so forth that's required to get those permits would definitely make individuals such as myself think about, twice about attempting to do something like this. But we've been able to move forward to this point. Finally, allowing suitable development on the subject lot will enhance and beautify that section of Route 58 while benefiting the local economy. And I hope that you will conclude that conditional HRC zoning is appropriate. Any questions?
In reference to, in reference to what Mr. Shanks been talking about, what have your fees been on this program?
Well, I spent $10,000 before I moved the first scoop of dirt. That involved engineering studies to get a land disturbance permit and stormwater runoff from the, from the state. And then there's a $2,000 surety bond to the city, so I easily spent over $10,000 was out of my pocket before I moved the first scoop of dirt. I operated heavy equipment myself, is something I know how to do that cut my costs, but my total expenditures have been over $24,000 so far to demolish those buildings and degrade the lot to where you see it now. Of course, that includes fuel, et cetera. But to answer your question more directly, my total fees that had to do with permits and being allowed to get to where I can do anything was $10,000 for that small job.
Other questions? The Shanks?
I just, to, for the benefit of Reverend Campbell and other members of council, I just wanted to mention, those are the old fees. The new ones are more than, more than double or triple what, what you had to go through.
Other comments?
As far as the fees.
Other questions? Do we have other comment for or against? Proposed. Shanks? Very good, we close the public hearing. Can we have a, let's see, or am I, yes. Do we have a, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vice Mayor, we adopt an ordinance amending the 2020 land use plan from SSR, SSR, suburban, single-family residential to CS. Community service rezoning from SR, our suburban residential to conditional HRC highway retail commercial, a 1.851 acre portion of 5555 riverside drive.
Second? Mr. Campbell? Reverend Campbell? Roll call.
Mr. Toma?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders? Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Consideration amending the year 2020 land use plan and rezoning 1005 Industrial Avenue from OT-R Old Town Residential to conditional LED-I light economic development industrial. Council letter number CL-877. We open the public hearing. Comments? We close the public hearing. Do we have a, Mr. Vogler?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance amending the 2020 land use plan from USR Urban Single Family Residential to ED Economic Development and rezoning from OT-R Old Town Residential to conditional LEDI Light Economic Development Industrial, 1005 Industrial Avenue.
Do we have a second? Mr. Gilstrap? Any debate? Yes.
No debate?
Okay. Any debate? No. Roll call.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders? Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Toma?
Aye.
Consideration of granting a special use permit to construct a communication tower at 1005 Industrial Avenue. Council letter CL-878. I open the public hearing. Comments from the public? Oh, we're on the roll. Nope, do we have comments? Nope. We do have comments. Come forth.
Good evening. I'm Anthony Smith, I represent Leuschner's Towers.
Good.
We seek to develop the site on behalf of Intellos, and we've worked closely with the planning commission, Nate Burton and Mr. Gilley, to locate a suitable location that would have the least amount of impact on the residential community. And we've also worked closely with the homeowners in that given area. Unfortunately, most of the houses that are above us are vacant and slated for demolition, but we've, we've still respected the neighborhood and worked closely with the homeowners and let them know what's coming. And I've not received any opposition, so I'm just open to any questions.
Questions? None. Anyone else speaking for or against? Good, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
We close the public hearing. Can we have a motion? Mr. Shanks?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor. I move to adopt an ordinance granting a special use permit to construct a communication tower in accordance with Article 3 of Section C, Item 4 of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia, in 1986, and amended at 1005 Industrial Avenue.
Do we have a second? Second, please? Ah, Mr. Vogler. Discussion. Roll call.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders? Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Toma?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
We're on the roll. Consideration of approval of the Monument Berryman Conservation and Redevelopment Plan. I open the public hearing. No comments? We close the public hearing. We have a motion. Mr. Vogler?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution approving the Monument Berryman Conservation and Redevelopment Plan.
Do we have a second? Mr. Rowley? Discussion. Mr. Shanks?
Yes, I just would like to make a couple of comments about the Monument Berryman Conservation and Redevelopment Plan. We, we, as a city, undertook a, an attack on blight three or four years ago, and one of my biggest concerns was the amount of money that was put in it without a plan and without an endgame. And while I was opposed to, to, to the extent that we undertook and to the amount we've paid, we've spent, and the sources of funding, I am pleased to say that now there is a plan and an endgame. And I want to compliment staff and the consultant for coming up with a plan. And I, I know it's just a plan, there's no money included in this motion, but when, when I've spoken against blight eradication and things like that in the past, it's more about the price and the no plan. And this is a plan, and it's not a perfect plan. I think it's a lot of hope, but, you know, hope is what makes things happen sometimes. So, thank you, Joe, and the staff for putting together a plan.
Comments? Other comments? Roll call.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders? Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Toma?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Consideration of amending Chapter 7 entitled "Bicycles" of the City Code to include the restriction of skateboards, rollerblades, roller skates, similar items, and sidewalks, and pedestrian walkways in the Main Street Plaza Park, and at churches, schools, recreation facilities, and business as prohibited. Can I hear a motion? Mr. Campbell?
Vice Mayor, I move we adopt the ordinance amending and re-eradining Chapter 7 entitled "Bicycles" of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia, 1986, as amended.
Reverend Campbell? Discussion. Yes, Mr. Gilstrap?
I don't think we ought to pass an ordinance or a law just to be a passing one. We have a lot of laws on our books. Matter of fact, we already have one that we'll cover, riding bicycles on the sidewalks on our books. I don't really know why we need another one. But I really don't think we ought to invest so much money in our river districts so we put up signs, know this, know that, know that. I, I really, and I also thought, during our work session, we reached a compromise that we would take some of those words out. Matter of fact, I thought we reached a compromise that we would address property damage by skateboards along, around the fountain area and the benches, that area. Now, this is, certainly mentions that area, but it includes, I happen to be on the trail this weekend, we have an ordinance right now that says no bicycles on pedestrian pathways. Well, that would mean no bicycles on Riverwalk. I, I have a problem with that ordinance. I, I don't really think we should be discouraging youth activities. I think we should encourage our youth to, to participate in good wholesome program. I happen to think skating is one of them. I can understand we don't want our property damaged, but I really have a problem with the wording of this resolution or ordinance.
Mr. Vogler?
Yeah, and the original reason that this was, was brought to council was because we had received complaints from, from citizens regarding the new Main Street Plaza about received complaints from citizens regarding the new Main Street Plaza about people skateboarding and, you know, grinding on the benches and chipping the paint and all that, and I don't think anybody here wants to see the new plaza get damaged and stuff. But the original proposal, the way it was given to us, covered the entire river district, which I did have a problem with, because as Councilman Gilstrap rightfully pointed out, we don't want to discourage people from doing some of those activities in the river district when it seems to be the main issue that we were having is down at the plaza itself. So I was glad that that part was changed to just say specifically the plaza, but I agree, I thought some of these things were taken out of it, wording, and again, I'm not sure why Segway is listed. I don't know if I've ever even seen a Segway in Danville, much less have a problem with one. So, yeah, I still have some issue with the wording in it. Again, I'm glad to see that it was narrowed down to focus on the plaza, because that seems to be the issue at hand, and rather than the entire river district, I would definitely have a problem with that. So, I don't know if we can bring this thing, but if we can table it and, again, maybe reword it, I don't know if that's the majority that council wants to do that, but I'm with Councilman Gilstrap, I still think there's some language in here I'm not exactly comfortable with.
Do you have a motion to table, then?
I did make a motion.
Do we have a second to table?
Second.
It takes president, so we'll have to vote, we'll vote on the motion to table. Is there a discussion on the motion to table? Does it hold a second? Okay, let us have a call. To table this motion.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
No.
Mayor Saunders? Mr. Shanks?
Yes.
Mr. Tomer?
Yes.
Mr. Vogler?
Yes.
Reverend Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Yes.
Tomer's going out with a flame right now. Decisive votes there.
I'm just letting Buckner deal with it.
Pass the buck. Very good, so let's table. Consideration of amending and reordaining multiple chapters and sections of the City Code to correct and update the code to align with the present organization responsibilities of the Fire Department. Do I hear a motion? A motion? Somebody give it. Mr. Rowley?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance amending and reordaining multiple chapters and sections of the Code, and the city of Danville to correct and upgrade said chapters and sections of the City Code to align with the present organization and responsibility, responsibilities of the Fire Department.
Do you have a second? Mr. Reverend Campbell? Discussion. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders? Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Tomer?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
The end is nearing. Consideration of adopting a resolution to concur with the school board of the City of Danville's election to pay the Virginia Retirement System VRS Board Certified Rate for non-professional employees. Do I hear a motion? Mr. Vogler?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution concurring with the school board of the City of Danville, Virginia, electing to pay the VRS Board Certified Rate.
Do you have a second? Mr. Tomer? Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders? Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Tomer?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Consideration of proposed amendments to the city's personnel system. Do I have a motion? Mr. Tomer?
May I move we adopt the ordinance amending the personnel system of the City of Danville, providing for the classification compensation and employee development for employment positions of the city.
Second? Do you have a second? Mr. Vogler? Discussion. Vote.
Mayor Saunders? Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Tomer?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Knew it was too good to be traded. Consideration of amending the city employment application to no longer require disclosure of past criminal history during the initial job application process. Do I hear a motion? Reverend Campbell?
Susan.
Oh, public, sure, we don't have a public hearing, we already had that. Second?
Did he give the motion?
He did.
Read it.
Okay, read it then, so. I'm anxious.
Vice Mayor, move for adoption of a resolution.
He reads fast.
To amend the city employment application to no longer require disclosure of past criminal history during the initial job application process.
Second? Sorry, I thought John needed to go to the bathroom, I was trying to hear anything. Okay, do we have a debate on this? Discussion, Mr. Rowley?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I like the way we got "I was" worded. I agree that somebody who has messed up and done their time and paid their dues has a right to apply for jobs. I know in the way we've written "I was" up, we have certain jobs by law that has to be looked into, as police officers being one, that type of thing, that you have to have a check on. And I hope that the city always tries to find the best possible person for a job. And so I'm going to vote for this, but I like the way we have it written, though, as is. Thank you.
Discussion, Mr. Rowley?
Yeah, this isn't going to be a filibuster, Bruce, I promise, but we have gotten some emails and calls and stuff this week about this, so I just wanted to, I know it's been a long night, I promise it's only going to be a filibuster. But, you know, to clarify what this is, as opposed, because I think there has been some somewhat misconception about being relayed what this actually does, but 12 states and over 60 cities have already adopted this, or some version of what we're talking about, including six here in the Commonwealth of Virginia. You know, a conservative state like Nebraska, and what's viewed as a liberal state like Massachusetts, they typically don't agree on many things, but they've both passed this. So to me, that shows you, it's not a liberal issue, it's not a conservative issue, to me, it's not even a political issue, this is a human issue. And nationally, I know ex-felons, they account for roughly about 8% of the working force population, and I wasn't able to get a statistic for Danville, but I wouldn't be surprised if, you know, we even have a higher percentage here. And these are people who have paid their debt to society, they've already served their time. And these are people more than likely that we all know, you know, these are people that you see on a weekly basis. And, you know, these are people who have, yes, in the past, made mistakes, but who amongst us here tonight has lived a mistake-free life? You know, not a single one of us has, I know that I haven't. So, you know, I want to be clear about this for some of the responses we got during the week, for there might be some confusion. Nothing we're discussing tonight will prevent the interviewer from asking about prior convictions. Nothing will prevent background checks from occurring. They will happen just as they always have, and of course, there's going to be, as pointed out, some past offenses that will prevent a person from obtaining a certain job. You know, you would not want someone who's a convicted child molester to be working in a job around children, that's never going to happen. This doesn't change any of that. All this does is give people an opportunity to get their foot back in the door, to get their life back on track, to be productive members of society, people who want to work. And that's all this does. And so I support this, you know, I want to encourage growing our workforce, I want to encourage people, you know, taking, seizing control of their life, and again, wanting to be productive members of society, and that's what a vast majority of these people want to do. So if this is one small step towards helping that happen, I'm glad to support it, I'm glad the way it's worded, and I'm glad that we'll be now the seventh city in Virginia to put this in place. Thank you.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I would like to support this, but... I would like to offer an amendment to the motion for the last whereas in the resolution to say as follows. Whereas the city will continue to perform full criminal background investigations on job applicants after they have been considered for hire based on the applicant's initial interview.
I guess I need to wait for a second. Okay, so you're proposing that they be interviewed first and then that be asked? What would that do?
Well, what I'm proposing is that we make our selection, and then, in an interview process, we would ask the questions of, for the jobs that needed to be asked, or even other jobs, but specifically those jobs that prohibit hiring someone with a criminal background, that we change that last whereas so that we can still do those criminal background checks, want to do those criminal background checks, but this is just a little easier way of saying it.
Do we have a second for this?
Second.
Second? Discussion.
I think we have already had a discussion.
Well, not on this.
Just to the amendment, Joe.
It's a change on the amendment. Just an amendment.
Yeah, I lost what I saw, but I think the question and clarification back before the discussion.
Anybody else?
But I make that motion because we still want to, the City of Danville, we still want to hire the best person, we still want to perform full criminal background investigations. It's just a little easier to state that after they have been considered for hire, in other words, they aren't going to be eliminated simply because they have, they were investigated and having a criminal background check. I would say that we go through that process, and then we make that check, we're still not going to hire them if they weren't truthful during their interview process with us, but we don't want to, we don't want to give the stigma that we're going to eliminate people because of their criminal background check just because we took it off of the application.
Mr. Rowley?
We're banning the box. I mean, I think it's defeating the purpose. I mean, it already says we don't want a box that somebody has to check. It says in the last whereas now that the city will continue to perform full criminal background investigations on job applicants. And I think that's, but you don't have to check a box on the application, and I think that's what this was all about. That people had a stigma of checking the box, or if they checked the box, they would just be from, you know, they'd be put in File 13. So I don't understand what the amendment says that it doesn't already say in the resolution.
Other discussion?
If you take it off the application, and you still do a criminal background check on everyone before the process begins to select someone, then you might as well leave it on the application.
Well, you...
What we're doing is still putting a stigma for selection of employees, we still not going to hire people for positions that we simply can't because of the criminal background. But the city already hires, my understanding, they do, hired. And so why would we do that criminal background check before the interview process?
I don't think we do.
We don't, but why, but this says we are.
No.
Who want to come up, Buddy?
I was just saying that is, you know...
Mr. Rowley, you?
In all due respect, it sounds like you putting your prejudice into it, that if you got an application...
You're probably right.
That had that, you see what I'm saying? That doesn't mean that our HR person said, "We're hiring people now that have been felons who have served their time." And I don't, I just don't understand what significance that amendment does that doesn't already say it in the resolution.
Mr. Tomer? Do you have comments?
No, I'm fine.
Reverend Campbell?
I'm missing something. I thought that ban the box, like Buddy is saying, is that they would not be on the application before they get to their finalists who they are looking at for that particular position, then they would do a search on them. But it's not, it's not at the beginning stages at all, it's only at the final stage when they get down to the selection of the individual that they want.
You have a question, Mr. King? Policemen, can they be hired without a state police check?
No.
Policemen? Why do you all typically do background checks now?
I think it's important to understand, we do the background checks at various times depending on the position. And if the position, if we can hire a convicted felon in the position, it may very well be the status of that employee is never known beyond the HR department. In other words, if that person is qualified, their application would be sent to the department among the qualified applicants, and the hiring decision would be made without any knowledge of their criminal record, if that job is one that can take someone with a criminal background. There are some jobs that can't. And I think it would be, I understand the intent is to give the applicant every benefit of the doubt, but I think the unintended consequence here would be that an applicant might be taken all the way to an interview for a job they can't ever be given. And in those cases, it's better to know that and advise the applicant of that than it is to go through the interview process and lead the applicant to believe they've got an opportunity to take that position. So I think what's before you accomplishes what I think you've been asked to do, which is ban the box. It does not tie the hands of the HR department to, on a case-by-case basis, a position-by-position basis, to do what's right for the applicant as well as for the city. And I think to go that extra step and prohibit background checks until an interview is conducted is not serving the applicant or the city well.
Mr. Gilstrap? Go ahead.
So you're saying a criminal background check is going to occur regardless on any employee, any person?
That criminal background check in...
And I don't have any problem with that, I just, I don't really think the person should have that check done, and that'd be one of the reasons they're eliminated for those that might accept a, someone who's had trouble in the past, especially, I think they...
The background check, and I'm looking for confirmation here, the background check would be done on the final applicant who has offered the job, and that would be done in every event.
Right, and I agree with that. And I don't have any problems with that. And I think that's what I'm trying to clarify here, that that occurs, and it didn't happen at the very beginning of the process and eliminate the person.
But in some cases, for some jobs, my argument would be, and we do this...
You could still do that for some jobs, I don't have any problems with that.
But if you insert language that prohibits us from doing that until an interview is conducted...
I don't think my language prohibited that.
That's what I understood it to say, that you could not conduct a background check until the interview...
Didn't say anything about cannot. I said we will conduct criminal background checks on, here, let me, I'll read it again. Except I just closed it. Locked.
Okay.
Locked up. I don't think you have my amendment on there.
Okay, so we need to vote on it, we need to, I guess, hear it one more time. We're voting on the amendment now.
Okay.
Because we do have a second.
Do da, do da, do da.
Do you have the amendment, Clark?
I do, if I can get this computer unlocked.
I mean, did we write it down? Susan's the last one.
I think his amendment, and Mr. Gilstrap, if you'll correct me if I'm wrong, is that...
I have it.
Okay.
I mean, it's unlocked anyway. Whereas the city will continue to perform full criminal background investigations on job applicants after they have been considered for hire based on the application and initial interview. So I'm simply saying is that in the interview process, then you should, and a finalist, you do the criminal background check. If they weren't truthful during the interview, that's an automatic dismissal for job, they don't get it.
Well, the way I would read that, it says after they have been considered for hire based on the application and initial interview, the way I read that is I would not conduct the background check until they have been interviewed.
Well, Joe, you just told me you don't now to the final applicant. I'm just saying, let's do what we say we do. You said you do not check criminal background checks until you have a final applicate, applicant.
That's not what I meant to say. I said, because we employ in numerous classifications those for which there is no prohibition to consider an applicant with a criminal record, we would not conduct a background check on that individual until they were selected for the job, but...
Clarification, we're hiring a police officer.
Right.
When do you do the criminal background check on a police officer? And we all know that a police officer cannot have a...
Right, we would do those background checks before they went very far into the process, certainly before they were interviewed. And why would we do that? Because we want to be able to tell the applicant, "We're sorry, you're not eligible for a police officer job with your criminal record, no matter how qualified you are, no matter If we have certain kinds of jobs, and you'll remember looking at sample resolutions that were done by other cities, some got quite specific about which would do background checks early on and which would not. Richmond comes to light out of mind. But for certain kinds of positions already, I mean, this is an extreme example.
So when do you do a background check on someone who's applying for a maintenance position?
We would not do a background check on that individual until they were selected for the job.
I'm not, is that what the original resolution says?
Butler?
I have a, I have a question and then potentially a, a suggestion. If we pass the original resolution as it was presented tonight, we have the ability to come back and make amendments to it, to get further specific if we decide to, because I, I think the, the problem what we're having with what is being discussed right now is that would cover police and then police jobs would not be able to, uh, do background checks until later in the process, which would be contrary to what is done now, correct? So if we wanted to make amendments later to this to get more specific, we can do that.
Sure.
Correct?
Yeah.
That would be my suggestion, John. I mean, we can discuss it and get more specific.
Do that. You go.
Uh, Mr. Gilstrap, I, I would like to agree with that. I don't know, I, I think that we can come back at a later time if it's okay with you.
Uh, I don't have any problem with that. I would, like I say, I support, I support it. I just, I, I, I do, I don't want to just, I don't want to ban the box just to ban the box, that's not the purpose, okay? We, we want to give everyone an equal chance of getting the jobs they qualify for.
I agree.
And that's all I'm trying to do. But I do not have any problem, I don't know the procedure of withdrawing the amendment and passing the original motion.
You wish to withdraw, then.
Pardon?
You wish to withdraw?
Uh.
Or you want to vote on it?
Yeah, I'll withdraw it.
Because you've got the, the, uh, upper hand here, we vote on here.
You got the second.
So you want to withdraw your amendment?
I'll withdraw the amendment.
Okay, there. Okay, so now we're back to the original motion. Can we, we've already read it and seconded it, can we, any other debate on the original motion? Very good, let's have a roll call.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Toma?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Very good. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Consideration of authorizing the city manager to sign and implement a grant repayment agreement to reimburse the Virginia Tobacco Indemnification and Community Revitalization Commission one point six million dollars over a four-year period. Do I have a resolution? Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vice Mayor, we adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to sign and implement a grant repayment agreement with the Virginia Tobacco Indemnification and Community Revitalization Commission.
Very second. Mr. Rowley? Debate? Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Toma?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders? Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Very good, before we go on to communications, we have a little, uh, award here, huh?
Don't walk off with it.
Oh. Adam.
Talk for a tear, you.
Go to the mic. Blog, I want that name, hasn't it?
You go to the mic.
Adam, grab your daughter.
Hold your daughter. Get your daughter.
It's like you're running for office again.
President, Adam, thank you, appreciate you for your eight years of death game service. You're a member of the council for, I think, that was six. Thank you.
City manager?
Let me be the first to thank you, Adam, for your service. It's been a pleasure, you've been a great, uh, member of the team here and we're going to miss you.
Thank you.
I'd like to just make a quick announcement, this Thursday night at the First Baptist Church, uh, eight seventy-one Main Street, at seven PM will be a meeting of Danville United, uh, the city's community relations coalition. Uh, for those interested in attending that need transportation, Danville Transit is providing free, uh, service. Uh, if you want to take advantage of Reserve a Ride, uh, you need to call seven nine nine five one four four, uh, first thing tomorrow morning. They need reservations by eleven AM to get the Reserve a Ride. Uh, that's an important announcement, but thank you very much, Adam.
Thank you. So, again, the location?
Uh, First Baptist Church, eight seventy-one Main Street.
Okay, very good, and seven o'clock?
And that's on the website if anybody needs to check that notice.
Very good. I will be there. City attorney?
I just wanted to make everyone aware that the next meeting of council will be July first at noon. That will be the time in which, uh, the newly elected and reelected members will be sworn in and you will also choose a mayor and a vice mayor at that time. Uh, please also remember that there will be a seven o'clock meeting that night, so those newly elected and reelected members get to go to work immediately after that meeting. Adam, I wanted to wish you all the best, uh, hope you and Robin, uh, all the best in all your future endeavors and, and, uh, your daughter's just so cute, we saw her in Target the other day and I was impressed that she was actually able to say, "Hello, Mr. Whitfield." That's not an easy thing for a two-year-old to say, but again, you and Robin and your daughter and, uh, wish you all the best in all your plans and appreciate all your service and have enjoyed working with you both in council and the utility commission.
Thank you. Mr. Mason?
Best of luck.
Thank you, very good. Roll call.
Reverend Campbell?
Yes, uh, Adam, I just wanted to thank you for the time I have been able to serve with you. What I liked about council and the, um, way that we work together is we can disagree, then after our opinions and council is over with, we shake hands and move on. And I must say, even many times that we had differences of opinions, but we didn't have a difference of relationship because we realized that this is business, it's serving our community, and, and I'm just thankful to have the opportunity to work with you. And also, we just want to salute the economic development team for pursuing the twenty million dollars types credit for the River District is going to have a great impact upon bringing new businesses within our area and development of, the back of, of the different things within our community. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Been waiting a long time for that.
Yes, we have.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Uh, yes, so we had a lengthy meeting, it was a very good meeting, I thought, and a lot of comments and a lot of difficult decisions, and I appreciate every one of the council members for, uh, uh, due diligence. I'd like to say that I first got to know Adam four years ago on the campaign trail. We had the pleasure of running with each other and we had some very interesting discussions, both during debates, before and after. Uh, that's when I grew to really admire Adam Toma. Adam Toma has been a tremendous asset to the city of Danville. He has always kept the citizens' best interest at hand, has influenced my vote with his wisdom, common sense and knowledge. I will miss him on council and the city will miss him. I wish him success and happiness and may God bless you, Adam.
Thank you, Jim.
Mr. Jones?
Robin, I'm so glad you're here tonight because I don't know, for some reason I feel like giving your address and telephone number out, but I just can't do it.
I'm throwing a shit on it.
In two thousand and ten, in two thousand and ten, Adam and I had the opportunity to run together and Reverend Samuel Griffin, we went to the radio station, Adam and I, that's when I met Adam. And I was nervous, I didn't know what in the world, and Adam was very wise then. Last week I was at a meeting and to hear people talk about you last week, how you're going to be missed, I, I really am going to miss you and I appreciate everything from seeing you at the Outback and we'll see each other around, but in the words of Bruce Hedrick, "Two thumbs up."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rowley?
Um, I had three or four pages, but I gotta go to the bath. Adam, um, you brought a lot to this council, I can tell you that, my friend. Uh, with your financial background, that's one good thing about council members, everybody brings a little piece of expertise and, uh, we really leaned on yours a lot, uh, we really do appreciate it. Uh, I've seen you grow over the last eight years. Uh, I know you're a proud daddy now, that means everything in the world. Enjoy them while you can, they grow up awfully fast. Uh, Robin, I'll see her at the next golf tournament, whatever, whatever tournament we're in, we always see them there, but thank you so much. Uh, I know sometimes splitting time with a job out of town and a new child and, and wife and it's tough, but we really do appreciate all you've done for us.
Thank you.
Two, three, four thumbs up on that one, yeah.
Mr. Shanks?
So much has already been said, I don't know what to add, other than I really have respected working with you over the last, uh, six years for me. Somehow it always turned out we talked a lot more during the budget season. And, uh, that goes to show the respect I have for you, uh, the, the main bean counter in the city. And I appreciate, uh, all the discussions and many discussions we had during the budget season, but also I've enjoyed working with you. And this past year being, uh, between you and Gilstrap has just been, just quite a, quite an event. No, seriously, I wish you best, best of luck. And Robin, uh, I hope y'all came in separate cars because I don't think you'll be able to get his head in the car.
Mr. Vogler?
I do want to start off and just quickly mention to, to send all our thoughts and prayers to people in Nebraska that, uh, were hit with a, a double tornado yesterday and devastated a small town of three hundred people, I guess. Um, so we're definitely thinking of them and then, you know, what everybody else has already said about Adam, but I did want to say in, in two thousand and six, when you were elected, uh, I was a student at DCC and I just remember thinking how cool and how great it was that a young person was elected to council and, um, certainly did inspire me and, and, and has continued to be a, a great friend and, and colleague in the time that I've been on council. Uh, you know, and Adam and I have a lot of fun debating national politics, but I, I feel like in the, in the time that we've been on council together and the local issues, uh, sometimes I feel like we're, we're two sides of the same coin and, and I'm certainly going to miss, uh, my seatmate and my friend and, and a great city councilman, and I know the entire city, uh, will be at a loss of, of you coming off council. So, you know, I want to thank you for your service to the city and being a great friend and mentor and help to me in the past few years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Miller?
You can always count on Adam Toma, he always showed up with the facts, he knew his details. He always had excellent arguments, you may not agree with him, but you had to respect what he said, because most of the time he was right. And all, his overriding, uh, theme was he would always do what's best for the citizen, even if it was an unpopular vote like tonight, it was what was best for the, the community. So we're going to miss you. Uh, please keep increasing the school age population. So, you been, you working on that?
Yeah, okay.
I missed the last meeting, I don't like to miss council meetings, usually I schedule vacations around it, but I just want to tell you what I did. Uh, Javer Min is a man you, you don't know and probably never know, he was, well, I consider my godfather. And he fought in Normandy and was wounded there. And he upraised me and I vowed I would go back to Normandy and I did on the seventieth anniversary. And it was just, just awesome to be there laying a wreath, uh, the three D-Day veterans were there, laid a wreath, the monument. I talked to one man who actually said he lowered the latch for his platoon to get off the first wave onto the beach, he was ninety-three years old. By the end of the day, half those men were dead. It was awe inspiring to lay that wreath and then they sang the Star Spangled Banner and all the French people with us sang the Star Spangled Banner. I mean, it just, it was just awesome. And then we went on the beach and we went to the pillboxes and then we went to the graves. There were seven thousand graves there. And that's only a fraction of the Americans that died in that essentially eight to ten week campaign. Thirty-five thousand Americans died. Thirty thousand French civilians died. Thirty thousand British, Australian, Dutch, French soldiers, Czechoslovakian, it was a multinational force, it wasn't just British and American. Thirty-five thousand died. Over a hundred thousand people died to give their life for us and liberty. And then the eerie thing was we went to the graves and we just wandered around, we didn't have any directions or anything, we just, just wandered around and then suddenly we came upon a, a cluster of graves, the Twenty-Ninth Infantry Division died June sixth, nineteen forty-four, the Bedford Boys. They were there, not all of them, but many of them were there clustered. We didn't, it was an area, we found it within fifteen minutes. So always remember, a hundred thousand people died for our liberties in those just few short weeks. So remember those people, thank you. Yes?
Mr. Toma?
Okay.
Last comment?
I, I want to say thank you to all the council members for their, for their kind words, I, I won't, I won't be lengthy tonight, you know, I can be long-winded. Some people said I should have been a minister, but I don't, I'll leave that to Reverend Campbell. But, uh, I, I do want to say that the past eight years, uh, it, it's been a lot of fun serving with, with all of you and the late nights, the long meetings, the tough decisions, we didn't always agree, but, uh, Cam, Councilman Campbell said, "We always got along." And, um, a few months ago, when I made the decision not to run again, I, I did so knowing that the city was in good hands, that we have a fantastic council, we have a absolutely superb city manager, the staff, city attorney, everyone. And so it was an easy decision in a way because I knew that I was walking away and, and, um, the city would, would be taken care of. Uh, you know, to the citizens of Danville, this is the last time that I'll probably talk to you as your council member. Um, and I want to say thank you for the opportunity. I remember being in high school and I had a dream of, uh, serving the local community and serving on council when we studied the city council members. And when I ran eight years ago, no one, no one knew my name, uh, they didn't know me at all, so social media just started, so I did the old school of social media, knocked on a lot of doors and, and met a lot of people. And I got to, I got to make so many new friends and, and learn so many things about the city. And I never really even thought I would win until, you know, maybe a week or two before the election, I started to gain some confidence that maybe we could do it. And we did it and, and I just, I'm thankful to the citizens because they enabled me to live out a dream and at the same time they enabled me to, to give back to, to this community. I graduated with a master's degree and I could have lived anywhere and, and gone and chased the skyscrapers, but I came back here to this little town that I was born and raised and, um, I don't regret it for one minute. Um, I'm happy to be here and I'm happy to have served. And Robin, thank you so much, I could not have done this without you. All the, all the times we've been out to dinner and a citizen and staff and, and they talk to us and our meal would be cold by the time we're done because they didn't understand and, and you're all right with it. Um, all the times we went to the grocery store and, and we've got a cart full of, of frozen produce, frozen items and produce and somebody wants to talk about the city budget or some controversial vote and I was glad to talk to them about it. And you're always so understanding, all the times that we came home at midnight and eleven thirty and all the other meetings, so thank you. And, uh, I, I resigned, decided not to run so that I could spend more time with her and my little one. And I've done a lot of great things in my life and I've seen a lot of things, but being a father is probably the greatest. And... And I'm looking forward to spending more time with her. So Ada, you ready for a tea party, little girl? Yes? Thank you. Thank you, Danville. Thank you to the citizens. I'll, I'll miss this job a lot. And I wish everyone the best and, and thank you for this opportunity.
A little work session.
Oh, wow.
After this meeting. And we extend adjournments.